All right, everyone. All right, everyone. It is 2:04 PM on this Tuesday, June 24th, 2025, and I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees, our last regularly scheduled meeting for this academic year. Now, in the absence of Clerk Woodley, JJ, will you be doing roll call? Or Vice President Mayberry?
Yes, ma'am. Okay, good afternoon. Christine Hull, Trustee Hull.
President.
Vice President Mayberry is president. Trustee Nicolette.
Good afternoon.
Trustee JJ Phoenix is absent today. President Smith. Trustee Westlake. Trustee Woodley is also absent today. Yes. You have a call, Madam President.
Thank you. All right, that closes item 1.02 and brings us now to item 1.03. So you may have heard that I said it is the last meeting, regularly scheduled meeting, of this academic year, and something that we have focused on this year is chronic absenteeism because we know we can't teach our children when they are not in the building. And this is an immense responsibility that we all own together as a community. But there is one person in this room who plays a very special role in helping to bring down chronic absenteeism and those efforts. She is our Director of the Intervention Department, Rochelle Marillo. Would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
As the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Rochelle. That closes item 1.03 and brings us now to 1.04, our land acknowledgement. Every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their hopes, dreams, and energy to making the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will, and some were drawn to leave their distant homes in the hope of a better life, and some have lived on this land for more generations than can be counted. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. We begin this effort to acknowledge what has been buried by honoring the truth. We acknowledge that some of our educational structures are situated in the traditional homelands of the Washu, Washo, Nuukmu, Northern Paiut, Niwi, Western Shoshone, and Nuhu, Southern Paiut peoples. We pay respect to their elders, past and present. These lands continue to be a gathering place for indigenous peoples, and we recognize their deep connections to these places. We extend our appreciation for the opportunity to live and learn in their territory. Thank you. That closes item 1.04 and Section 1 in its entirety and brings us now to Section 2, our consent agenda items. Today, we have items 2.02 to 2.18. I have not been noticed prior to the meeting for any trustees' interest in pulling those items, nor do I see any lights on right now. Seeing no lights on for comment or for pulling, JJ, do we have any public comment for items 2.02 to 2.18?
The Board received an email from Brandon Lewis related to item 2.09.
Very good. So I'll bring it back to this board and look for a motion to approve consent agenda items 2.02 to 2.18.
I move that the Board of Trustees approves consent agenda items 2.02 to 2.18.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Trustee Nicolette and a second by Trustee Hull to approve consent agenda items 2.02 to 2.18. Seeing, okay, seeing no lights on for discussion on the motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. All right, motion carries five to zero. Thank you so much, colleagues. That closes Section 2 in its entirety and brings us now to Section 3, our finance items. And we will open this section with item 3.01. This is the presentation, discussion, and possible action to adopt Washoe County School District Board Resolution 25-017, a 2025 school improvement bond resolution, authorizing the district to issue its general obligation, limited tax, school improvement bonds, Series 2025, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $58 million. This is an item for possible action, and we have with us today our Chief Financial Officer, Mark Mathers. Thank you for being here, CFO Mathers.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Madam President, trustees. So as noted, this action would authorize or approve the bond resolution for issuance of $58 million of what are called in Nevada rollover bonds. Rollover bonds, you remember, are bonds that are pledged by the school district debt rate of the property tax that residents and commercial businesses pay in Washoe County. And that $58 million will be used to fund the fiscal year 26 Annual Capital Renewal Program that you will see later on in the agenda in item 4.01, as well as, if approved later, design costs for the new administration building. And so, the $58 million is the last actual remaining allocation of rollover bonds. We went to the County Debt Management Commission two years ago. So, any further rollover bonds we issue, we'll have to go back to the County Debt Commission for more. But again, this will authorize us to go to market to sell rollover bonds either this fall or winter. We're assessing kind of where the Fed's at and where might be a good time to sale. In the short term, your approval of the bond resolution pursuant to Nevada revised statutes also allows us to encumber contracts that would be issued under the Annual Capital Renewal Program ahead of the bond sale. So it's important that we come to you today so that we could start beginning executing contracts this summer for work on the Annual Capital Renewal Program. As noted in the staff report, we have really strong coverage right now on our property tax-backed rollover bonds. Due to kind of the growing property taxes we receive, we also have strong reserves of more than $80 million to weather any economic storms that may come ahead. And so, you've seen these kind of actions before, and again, this will be the last allocation out of our current authorization from the Debt Management Commission. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
While we contemplate our burning questions, JJ, do we have any public comment on this?
I have no cards for this item.
All right. Well, I will bring it back here. I think this is relatively straightforward, and you always do a fantastic job of keeping us aware and the public. So I'll bring it back here. If there's no comments or questions, I will entertain a motion for item 3.01.
Yeah, I'll move that the Board of Trustees adopts the Washoe County School District's Board Resolution 25-017A, 2025 School Improvement Bond Resolution, authorizing the district to issue general obligation bonds in aggregate principal amount not to exceed $58 million.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Vice President Mayberry, and we have a second by Trustee Nicolette. Seeing no lights on for discussion on the motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. All right, motion carries five to zero. Thank you so much. And we know CFO Mathers is not going very far because now we will open item 3.02, the presentation and discussion on the fiscal year 2025-26 amended final budget for all district funds and possible action to approve the fiscal year 2025-26 amended final budget. This is an item for possible action. And joining CFO Mathers is our Budget Director, Jeff Bazo. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you again, Madam President, trustees. We are here today to present to you the amended final budget for fiscal year 2025 to 2026. That's the fiscal year that begins this July 1st, just a few days away. As you can see, this final budget, final amended budget reflects all of the recommendations we made to you and that you approved on June 10th, and nothing, nothing less, nothing more than that. So, included in your packet is the document we will file with the state reflecting all of the changes that you made on June 10th, as well as the preceding board meetings where we talked about the fiscal year 26 budget. Really, this budget reflects the culmination of extensive work and board guidance and staff analysis. And, you know, as you know, it's been shaped by major financial challenges we faced. It include, you know, some changes at the state and federal level that we had to kind of work through on the fly. But it was also shaped by our commitment to sustaining classroom instruction and student support. So, we didn't have to sacrifice, in my view, the supports we give to our students with this budget, and we're proud of that. So just to, again, recap, we came from roughly a $9.7 million deficit at the beginning of the budget process and have reduced that deficit down to $2.1 million. That's a 75% reduction of that deficit amount in a matter of three months or so. You can see the actions we took at every board meeting. There were many. Certainly, this budget was pressured by a number of costs that we faced that we reported to you in February, and that included the PERS rate increase that we were notified about in December of last year, operating costs for our new Debbie Smith CTE High School. We continue to see special education costs increase to provide supports to those students. And certainly, the largest factor represents salary and benefit increases or cost increases for our employees. So that includes step increases they are due. It includes health insurance costs and many other kinds of costs. But again, we've made tremendous progress in a little bit of a time. And so, the, where we end up is, again, a $2.1 million deficit, and instead, if we had a balanced budget, our fund balance would end up at 10.4%. With that $2.1 million deficit, we end up with a budgeted fund balance of an even 10.0%. Still very comfortable territory, certainly enough in our view to weather, again, any fluctuations we might see due to the economy. So I think we're in very good shape. That $2.1 million deficit, as you know, will be temporarily absorbed by the fund balance, reducing it slightly, but that is consistent with Board Policy 3051, which permits limited use of reserves during economic transitions to allow for more thoughtful restructuring rather than making rush decisions. And we talked about that quite a bit at the last meeting. So, in essence, this gives us time, not a lot, but some time through fall of 2025 to bring forward more sustainable solutions to you. And this list is a partial list of the things we will look at, but by no means a complete list. We will be looking at new contracts, vacant positions, like we talked about at that last meeting, and a number of other potential reconfigurations of services. So looking ahead to fiscal year 27, we know we'll be faced with continued challenges largely due to enrollment declines and flats funding from the state, but today's action really does lay the foundation for addressing those challenges proactively. We think we presented to you a very transparent plan that balances financial stewardship with our shared mission of student success. And so, I think there may be some comments along the way from our superintendent he would want to make about some recent developments of the state, but again, we're presenting this amended final budget to you for your approval today.
That's wonderful. I, I can't believe I just said "that's wonderful" after the six months of budgetary meetings that we've just had, but it's honestly the truth. I am so incredibly proud of how this governing body worked with its community and its team to manage a challenge like this that was deepened partway through, particularly when we found out about the loss of the $700,000 dedicated to special education funding. And yet, here we are, doing very well after a difficult process, and it just goes to show how when teams work together and we govern well in partnership with our community, we can do hard things and we can face hard challenges. And I think you, CFO Mathers, and Budget Director Jeff Bazo, and the entire team deserve so much credit for taking us through step by step in a way that was open and clear so that everyone could follow along, and just incredibly grateful to all of you for this. And I do believe that Superintendent Ernst has something to share with the community and the board.
Thank you, Madam President, and I very much agree with the comments that you just offered. I too would offer my very sincere thanks to Mr. Mathers and Mr. Bazo and our entire leadership team and really our entire organization to be able to work our way through the deficit that we have been faced with in the timeframe that we had in the backdrop of less-than-stable educational funding factors. The team has really responded in a very strong way, a very collaborative way, and brought forward solutions that really work to keep the cuts away from our schools and away from our students. And I think that that continues to be an important guiding principle that we'll embrace as we're going forward. And really excited that recently, the team continues to find ways to support our youngest students. We had been keeping our eyes open for some substantial early childhood funding that we thought would, would, would help continue to support some of our kindergarten aides. And while that funding did not come through, our team was able to find ways to make that happen. And so, when we look at our kindergarten classrooms and as we talked about in terms of reviewing some of our next steps, we had been looking at that Kinder 1, 2, and 3, and looking at those class ratios. But in this instance, the ability to find ways to continue to support our kindergarten students by being able to maintain these important aids and assistance. I will tell you routinely, I go to my school visits, often kindergarten, one of our favorite places to be. We will see these aids and assistance, and the teachers will regularly talk with us about how important these positions are. And again, thanks to collective leadership efforts, we have been able to keep those intact as we're going into next year. And so, I'm very pleased with that. And in the backdrop of budget cuts, we still are able to prioritize and repurpose funding in areas that we have all collectively identified as important. And so, as we're moving forward today, I just thought that that would be important to share with everyone as a positive step in the, in the right direction, and, and we'll continue to, to do these things and have these guiding principles. So, again, thanks to, to the entire team and thanks to our board for, for your leadership and thoughtful deliberations around a difficult process, but ending up in a place that is a productive and positive place.
Well, that's absolutely remarkable because we've gotten many emails from kindergarten teachers very worried about the loss of those aides in the kindergarten classrooms. So that is remarkable news that we've been able to save all of those roles, especially with the class sizes being as they are. Very, very well done. Thank you. That's wonderful news. I would very much like that to be our closing statement. Dr. Nicolette.
It may not be a closing statement, but I do want to acknowledge, I had previously said everybody's got to have some skin in the game, and our, our students can't even know that it's happening, and I think we're pulling that off. And it's a bravo to every single adult who recognizes that together we can do this and will make some sacrifices. We absolutely will. And yet, we'll get up in the morning and be very proud to serve Washoe County School District, students, employees, and our communities. And again, everyone's got a little skin in the game and should be very proud of, of making some sacrifices so we can continue our work. Thank you.
JJ, do we have any public comment on this item?
Pablo Navaduran.
Welcome, Mr. Navaduran.
Now, I know this is a very difficult decision, you know, we lose, lose teacher aid and employees, so, many employees who are, you can reach your district, lose some principal due to allocation of a budget cut, so. So, I want to ask you know, like, how much the, you know, as score, how much the petition costs for that my neighborhood to the money ranch? I know that could cause burden, but, you know, my community proposing that going water to reserve, so. So I think this is a really difficult decision, you know, loss of aid to kindergarten, you know, but we could keep a petition. It's a really tough decision to make, so. And I could be very surprised if two-year, four-year down the road, we had to increase the lock, so. Just like we did a pre-pandemic type, so. So thank you. It's a very brave statement, so I will fight for allocation, we'll fight for you.
Thank you, Mr. Navaduran. And just to make sure that we're clear, we were actually able to save all the kindergarten aides, so there's no loss to them. We, Superintendent Ernst just announced that we saved every single one of those kindergarten aide positions. You're very welcome. All right, Dr. Nicolette, I think you closed it really well. Do you want to make, we could make statements or we could go to a motion?
I see Adam's finger getting ready, so you go for it, my friend.
Well, I, 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 I was struggling to find some profound statement to make too before we make the motion, but I just want to chime in too, if I may, Madam President, thank the, the budget team in this body, you know, this has been a journey, especially during legislative sessions, they're so fluid. And I had a lot of constituents in my district too, being one of the at-large trustees that were, particularly in kindergarten, that were very concerned about losing their, their support, so I applaud you for that. And, you know, I also, as we move forward, let's not forget the needs of our special ed students as well, and, you know, we, I don't think we quite got there in terms of at least making it attractive, but I think there's some legislative money that we can look at, you know, going forward. But, you know, our most vulnerable students and those that teach them clearly continue to need the support. I know we're working in the right direction, so that will, that's, that's what was on my mind, I was trying to struggle to find words for. But, yeah, I'll be happy to make the motion, if, if, everybody.
I'll be happier. I move that the Board of Trustees approves the fiscal year 2025-2026 amended final budget.
All right, I will second that motion.
All right, we have a motion by Trustee Nicolette. We have a second by Vice President Mayberry. Seeing no other lights on for discussion on the motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. All right, motion carries five to zero. Thank you so much, gentlemen. Well done, very, very well done. All right, team, that closes item 3.02 and Section 3 in its entirety and brings us now to Section 4, our items for presentation, discussion, information, and/or action. Starting with item 4.01, this is the presentation, discussion, and possible action to approve the 2024-2025 E Major Projects Plan for the fiscal year 2026, Capital Renewal Plan for Major Repairs and Capital Renewal Projects Throughout the Washoe County School District and Construction Phase Funding for the Bernice Matthews Elementary School Modernization Project and the Echo Loader Elementary School Rebuild Project as recommended by the Capital Funding Protection Committee in the amount of $152,200,000. This is an item for possible action, and we have with us today our Chief Facilities Management Officer, Tammy Zimmerman. Welcome, Chief Zimmerman.
Thank you, President Smith, trustees. It's a pleasure to be here today to bring to you the recommendations of the Capital Funding Protection Committee. We brought this to them on June 6th of 2025. It's our yearly capital renewal. We'll do that first, and then we'll follow with the others before we actually ask for a recommendation. So our capital projects, we do the capital renewal every year. We finished about approximately 100 capital projects over this fiscal year for about $117 million. Our team works incredibly hard with our consultants and district staff to make these happen for our schools and to bring parity with their HVAC systems, paving, all the things that you saw, you see in that proposal there. It is a systematic approach. We prioritize all of our building systems and site systems within our facility condition index system, and they are prioritized on this list when they meet, when they exceed their useful life and they are no longer serviceable. And what that means by no longer serviceable is we can't find parts for it, it is just not repairable by our maintenance crew. We do review these with our shop supervisors because they are the experts out in the field, as well as the SFCs at the sites, because they see those things every day, and we really rely on their input for that. Our, our, our ENA department goes out about every year, a year and a half through the school, walks it with the principal, with the staff there to see what their needs are that helps put that information into this list. We also come and meet with the Safe and Healthy Schools Commission and help prioritize those Safe and Healthy Schools items with them. This is your, the typical list. I know you guys probably are pretty familiar with this, most of you, they have the same topics on them. We kind of prioritize them by ADA, asbestos, carpentry, things fall within that category, and you can see there are specific schools listed and specific scopes listed for each of those items. We try to keep it about the same percentage of the dollar amount because we want warm, safe, and dry. And that's, we spend a lot in HVAC, a lot in grounds, a lot in safety and security, as you can see those big sections of the pie there. We do that because those are the, the biggest things that we need to keep in those schools running for comfort and safety items. So with that, that is a total of $50 million. We're going to ask that in our last slide on here for the, the actual approval of it, but it is a $50 million plan throughout the district for that. And if you have any questions about the capital renewal portion, I'll take those now.
So Chief Zimmerman, if you want me to pause on this or answer this in two parts, we can, but I know something that myself and other trustees have been talking about are around a renewed focus on the importance of both shade. a renewed focus on the importance of both shade, which I'll allow other trustees that are very passionate about that, and then also playgrounds. I know in the next two projects we're going to talk about, we'll talk about improvements specific to those. But as we look to schools and particularly elementary schools that are not going to be touched by the facilities modernization plan for a while, and in knowing how important recess is. So to us as adults, maybe we don't remember recess or maybe we do, but playing and learning outside for little bodies is just as important as that time that they're spending in the classroom. When you've got those wiggles and you need to be learning, they learn through their bodies and with their bodies. Learning is play for children. And so we look at some of these playgrounds that we have and knowing that a lot of these projects won't be formally touched for a while. Playground and shade structure allow a community to see the value of capital renewal in a more near term way for an investment that would also carry forward when those buildings are touched in the future. So that's a long way of saying, are we open to talking more about the pace that we renew these playgrounds so that we can bring these improvements and this joy to school sites that are maybe not targeted for a while from now?
Thank you for the question, President Smith. If you'll go back and we look under department requests, we actually do provide shade structures in an order of where they will not see an FMP project in the near future. So we do, that was kind of our, our way to balance the FMP with a new school and providing them to older schools. If there is fund savings with that bidding, then we can go ahead and do another one. And we have the autonomy within those categories to add projects throughout this capital renewal. And so we would look to do that. The same with our grounds on there. You'll see there is no playground replacement on this specific list because we have about $250,000 in savings in that item from FY '25 that we will look to replace playground equipment at Warner and other schools that are on that list. So we do that and we have the ability to do that within those categories based off of the Capital Funding Protection Committee's approval for us with that.
I appreciate that because, and correct me here, and then I'll go to trustee Hall. I think we have about three of those projects currently scoped. And I'm not suggesting that all of a sudden this go to a level that is untenable, but even if we could grow that to five or even six, those are additionally two or three more schools that can be completely revitalized in their outdoor play. And so I would ask if there is that savings, even just making that incremental growth would make a huge difference in some of these schools, which traditionally are placed in communities that maybe don't have other parks nearby. Some of us live in developments where parks are built in as part of that developer agreement. Many communities do not. And so that playground equipment is a lifeline to their community play. So that's just an idea. I don't know if you want to comment on that, and then I'll go to trustee Hall.
So absolutely. And that's what we intend to do with that extra funding savings out of those categories is to move on and to replace playground structures with bigger amenities than they have so that they can have more students play on those and that affords the opportunity for more children.
I appreciate that because playgrounds vary by age. We've got kindergarten playgrounds, older children, and then children of different abilities as well, too. And let's be honest, a lot of these playgrounds that we have from decades ago did not contemplate the different physical abilities and needs of our children that we try to capture now in inclusive playground. Thank you so much for that.
Thank you, President Smith. I would just like to add an idea as well, that play looks different when you're a teenager in middle and high school, but it is also still incredibly important to have shade and opportunities to socialize and play on a field and to do all of that. So while we may not have a slide at a middle school or a high school, although that could be really fun, but we may not have a play structure. I think it's still really important that we also prioritize our secondary schools because so many of them don't have any shade. And I will admit, I'm the proponent for the shade because I am very concerned, my kids know I like follow them around the sunscreen all summer. And I know our kids don't do, reapply during the day. So I really want to provide those opportunities for as many kids as possible. We got to take an incredible tour yesterday of the new Debbie Smith, and I was so impressed with the big overhang and all the tables and the benches and the opportunities for kids to be able to interact and engage because that's also how we learn is we socialize. And they can learn so much from each other. But if there's no space for that in our secondary schools, then they're not learning how to socialize and they're just on their phones. And since we want them to put their phones away, we want to provide that for secondary schools. So I just want to throw in an additional ask that we also allow for secondary schools to be a part of that decision process of having shade and grown up play structures.
Thank you, President Smith. Hi, Ms. Tammy. I know I'm going to sound like a broken record, but when we're considering the outside landscaping and how it's going to look, I mean, I can't help but think of one of my schools, Bud Beasley, because City of Sparks, it's utilized by City of Sparks also for youth softball, soccer. And so the fields are very well maintained. They're watered, they're mowed, weed fertilizer. But then I think of Sun Valley Elementary School, and they were basically playing the championship game on dirt. And I looked around and there were so many parents there participating in this, I mean, from both sides. The parents from Lincoln Park were there for the championship. The kids were coming out for Sun Valley Elementary School, but they were on a dirt field. And it's no one's fault really, other than the fact that we live in a desert and we can't, water scarce. It's, we don't, the funding to maintain these, we don't have the agreement with City of Sparks on a lot of our elementary school properties now. But if we want to build the parent involvement and the excitement and the buying into the school and being part of the kids and what they're doing, I just, we, I'd appreciate, I would, if we could look ahead on how we can facilitate fields that will support these activities and that can be maintained and don't turn into a dust bowl. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that comment. We'll move on to, let me get back to the end there. We'll start with Bernice Matthews Elementary School funding request as recommended by the Capital Funding Protection Committee. So we started this project in spring of 2024 with hiring Ben Wirtbagoti to design it. They were the original designers of those pinwheel schools, as we call them. We worked with leadership for the prioritizations of items that schools like that don't have within the ed specs. And those are the items that they came up with, one, two, and three, that were kind of non-negotiable. And you'll see there's outdoor learning areas and shade structures are one of those things. And I'm going to pinpoint one of them on the Matthews project so you can see that. Matthews is pretty fortunate. We do have a joint use facility agreement with the city of Reno still. And so they have a nice green grass field out there that they get to partake of that's adjacent to that park. We then hired Core Construction as our construction manager at Risk in January of 2025. They've been a valued partner for us for many of our new school builds. We hosted a community meeting in March of 2025 at Bernice Matthews Elementary School to put out some ideas, let everybody know what we were thinking, and gain any feedback that we had or that they had to put into the design for that project. This is the scope that we were, that we are getting ready to bid and have plans for that are ready to go out through Core Construction. It has approximately 11,000 square feet of addition, which are classrooms, hub spaces, general use restrooms, updated single point of entry. It's got a new steam lab. I'll show you some pictures when we get through here, but it looks, and some outdoor learning spaces. So phasing plan, they're going to really start on the beginning of fall, putting the classrooms in the back and get that taken care of so that the rest of the school can function. And then in the summer of '26, they'll start interior to the school because that'll be a little bit more disruptive and be completed somewhere in the fall section, but really with an active campus in mind. And they're very good at logistics for that and helping with the school. And we'll be in constant communication with the principal to make sure they know what's happening and how it's moving forward and how we can still facilitate that school learning time. So here's a picture of it. That top green of the actual roof that's more on the bottom is an actual shade structure. It's an overhang that is adjacent to a hub space. So they get to actually bump out from that hub space into that. It's a little social. It's a little bit of come and get outdoor, outdoor learning. Outdoor classrooms are a big deal for schools anymore. And so that's kind of, it allows them to move out to that, but it's adjacent to the building as well. So it does, it is a cost savings when it's adjacent to a building versus outside. And this was kind of our answer and try with this one to see what that looks like. Steam lab, it'll be very visible as you walk into that front vestibule. It's the old, what they had as a computer lab. We're going to repurpose that because we have computer carts that can go into classrooms. So it's going to be a steam lab adjacent to the media center or library. This is the new hub that'll be in that back classroom area, some spaces for them to collaborate, socialize, and learn. This is their existing interior courtyard. We're going to revamp that and make it bright and hopefully welcoming to them and take into account their colors that they had in those rooms already, but make it vibrant and welcoming. That's the picture of the general use restroom. It is at the back portion of the existing wing where we're opening it up. So it's adjacent to the hub and to the new classrooms back there so that we can have some of those spaces. That is, for schools, they love those. And so this is a big want for them. So you'll see on here, there's a GMP1, which is the total dollar cost. And then we have breakdowns past that. We have some alternates. We always like to know if the bids come in cheaper and less expensive, what could we add to it? And here are some of the items that we have in the back of our mind to add to it. We feel like we will be able to incorporate those with this. Professional services, this is our help for us and our experts to actually do some of the hazardous material items, to do some of the roofing inspections because they are area experts on that. It also allows our staff, who are construction managers, to manage it because our staff's time gets charged to the project. So we, then when we budget and we look at it, we have a total project cost in the end. So we have that data and that information. You can see on here, we have some furnishings, fixtures, and equipment. We have some contingencies on there. That's where we could buy some additional items that go out on the playground, maybe a Gaga ball pit or those kind of things. I'm paying attention. But we look at those opportunities and we look at what we can do for them. And so we'll be, as we see, if the, if our prices come in below that, we'll be able to provide those items. So we'll start construction this, as soon as we get done here, we'll start bidding this for construction in June and then start construction in 2025. But we're going to be doing some bidding before that. And then in fall of 2027, we anticipate the completion of all of it.
That's wonderful. And thanks for the mention of the Gaga ball pit. And so my question with this is, is not just about Gaga ball, but I saw how we have the projection for about 100 more students. We know that this community is a community that will be touched by the zoning advisory committee. Will there be flexibility with the plans? Because until the zoning advisory committee does their work and this board passes potential changes for that community, we won't know exactly for sure how many kids will be there. Could there still be flexibility in the design, whether for outdoor play for the building, pending the outcome of those decisions when we have finality in those areas?
There could be flexibility with some interior finishes in that, but the actual building gets bid as a whole. So the building and the classrooms, it'll allow us flexibility with that. It could allow us to move programs into there if that, if the zoning advisory committee changes and decides to put different quantity of students there. But we're always in need of that space. We have room for, we'll need room for their food pantry. They have a family resource center, community and schools area that we can have those areas move. And they always have a need for conference spaces or breakout spaces for students and special needs.
Could we go back to the wish list slide, the like, if we have? If we have the, okay. So I'm curious, when it says alternate A through D, is that in, is that in order of, like?
There's no order of importance for those or decisions. It's just really what do the bids look like at the end and what can we afford? And what is the highest benefit for that school?
Okay. But the, the front entry part, that's just altering what we've already done because all of the pinwheels got, they already got changed to a single point of entry. So that's not a single point of entry. That's just changing the, the front entrance design.
It helps with the single point a little bit. It does have, every elementary school has a single point of entry. It does function. This new single point that we have started and designed as an alternate is more open. So from a safety perspective, you can see who's coming and going, which is, it changes the face of that to make those, the columns go away so that it's just more safe and you can visualize from that front office.
Okay.
It allows more space in the vestibule for parents and that to come in and volunteers and be checked in.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you clarify alternate, alternate D? I just, the Paradise Park demo restroom building caught my eye. I may have been distracted, but that's a city park, right? How does that?
It is a city park. And so it is adjacent to our facilities. It's in the back of the fields there. And that restroom is not used by the city. It's locked up. It isn't a benefit to them. But that property could be a benefit to our playgrounds and allow more grass space back there and more space for students. We are, if we go through zoning advisory and they put more students here, we could utilize that additional space for students to play. And it just seems like a great way to work with the city as a partner, clean up something that's there with a boundary line adjustment. And they are all in favor for that and included in our property. All right, we're ready to move on to Echo Loader Elementary School. So this was identified in our FMP in December of 2023. We hired H&amp;K Architects who does, has our prototype for elementary schools in February of 2024. And we had community outreach and a community meeting at Echo Loader with the community and staff in February 2025. This did require site plan review by the city, which they approved. They're all for having us expand and put a new school over there. We had additional meetings with staff to talk about, because we will be building the new school adjacent to the old school, similar to what we're doing at Vaughn Middle School. That's the site plan. So we're going to, the intention is to put it on the soccer field and then flip that and put out some playground and outdoor learning spaces outside on the, where the existing building is. You'll see it's got some, we're trying something new with this, some mini pitches, which is a big deal with the city of Reno right now. They are smaller soccer pitches that are put on surfaces and they have fences around them so that students don't lose the ball all the way across the playground, have to chase it. They actually get to stay within a confined space. So we're working to do that at this school because their soccer pitch will no longer be on that grass field. And so we're going to provide them this and see how that works. This is, oh.
I just want to affirm my belief in this is a perfect time. And I don't see it here, but that's, you can't see all the nuances. This is a perfect time to ensure that not only students, but staff have shade. It's really important. The, in our high elevation community, cancer's a real thing. And so this is a perfect time.
The neat thing about this is it's, it's a site adapt. So when we do that, we have to make it fit on the piece of property or look to fit it on the piece of property. So we had to shift where classrooms are. So there are more classrooms upstairs. We added them up into a second layer and they actually create an overhang in the back that provides shade there, right? So that's kind of a cool, there'll be some, they anticipated to have some picnic tables underneath it, similar to what you saw at Debbie Smith yesterday. So trying to think in that lens, we get a twofer, right? You also see a shade structure on here. It's the, the blue that's kind of on the, I guess, the left-hand side of the brown area. That little canopy is a shade structure. So you see the mini pitches on the right. There's some playground structure in the middle. And then that blue square is a shade structure, proposed shade structure as well.
Sorry, where's the overhang part?
The overhang is in the back. And let me see if maybe I haven't.
So it's not on the main playground?
It's not on the main playground. It's adjacent to the back of the steam lab. And It's adjacent to the back of the steam lab and the lunchroom. So they can have it from, you can see it from the lunchroom, you can see it from the steam lab and you have that overhang as well.
Okay, so the only shade on the playground is the blue overhang?
Correct. There, I, I should say, that is still playground behind the school because there is asphalt all the way up to the top, to that door there, um, at the back and the, the lunchroom.
Okay. Sorry, can I ask a question about that? Thanks. So I, I just, while I understand that that is what we, we say is playground space because it is where it is and it's, there's multiple lunches with a school of nine, uh, well, this isn't 900, but with a large school, there's not, they're going to have multiple lunches and all of that. So the likelihood of students being able to play out there on a regular recess is probably unlikely. So the majority of recess will happen on this back playground with one shade structure.
That is.
So I, I think, I think what maybe we're asking for is, are we able to add a, a shade structure before we start building? Because I don't think that one is enough. Well, I, I understand that there's other space. That very large playground having a, you know, looks like maybe with a few tables underneath it is, is pretty small.
It is an outdoor classroom size space with a canopy over the top of it.
No, no, I understand that, but that's not where regular recess is going to happen. I, I just, the, the likelihood that, that that will be a, for duty purposes and for just the general operation of a elementary school, I just don't see that space being a regular recess space. So when the kids are on their kind of free range recess, there's only so many teachers that can do duty. So they're probably only going to allow for the back portion of the school to be where recess is. And then that will be monitored during class time, like an outdoor classroom. So we can't really count that as recess shade space is what I'm trying to say.
So, and maybe I'm misunderstanding because there's the shade structure, the shade from the, the building and the overhang. And then there is another shade structure on the playground.
Right, but, but the, the other part you're saying isn't really accessible on that, on that playground, right?
It, it is accessible to it.
Okay.
Like it, it does run along the back portion of it. So it's accessible because that is where you'll have your kindergarten playground up there. So there will be some recess up in that portion as well. So it might not be used fully by every grade.
Yeah, okay. I'm just envisioning it being a little bit blocked off and like not allowable space because it's, it would require a whole nother duty teacher, most likely. That's why I'm just suggesting that if there's a way we could do more shade on the actual playground, that would be great.
And I think because this is a rendering, it doesn't show you how you can, how it lines up with that back. And I can get you, we do have a fly through that I'll send to you, send to JJ so you guys can see it maybe more clear.
Okay, that works.
Thank you, President Smith. Can we go back to that? Sorry. So the brown and it looks like there's like monkey bars or something on that. Have, have you ever been to Parra Park? I think so. So in the, the main, by Jerry Whitehead, the main, um, playground area with the slides and, you know, ramps and climbing things. They have these like sails, I want to say, over the top of it. So a lot of it is shaded and they could probably do a better job of shading it. But it, it does provide shade over the main play area. I don't know if it'd be cost prohibitive or, but if we're, if we're concerned about shade, I mean, that might be an idea to provide shade over the main kind of play equipment.
We can look at options and what the actual play structure comes with for the shade structures and see what that extent is.
Okay, thank you.
So this is the breakdown of the construction phase estimates with the construction, professional services and FFNE, which is, this is the total of 80 million 319,000. You'll see the breakdowns in your packet. We always like to kind of compare to what we've seen before. I will say it's hard to make a comparison because we've never demoed a school on an elementary school. So that's, you know, it's, we have a price there per square foot that is a little bit higher than the other ones. But that's part of it is we're demoing and having to redo surfaces in that, in that space. So next steps is we'll be starting construction hard bid here in a little bit. Um, board approval for contracts and looking for completion in 2027. And with that, is there a, the last one? So in the packet, there is our nifty little, uh, spreadsheet that has all of the dollar amounts. So for the 2024, 2025 E major project programs, there's 50 million for capital renewal, the 80.3 million for, um, Echo Loader replacement, and there's 21.9 million for Bernice Matthews for a total funding request of 152.2 million dollars.
I just have a quick question, sorry. Um, the, the construction comparisons, I, I know, I mean, when we built Poliquita's, prices have gone up a lot. And I really appreciate the explanation that because we're also demoing a school. So per square foot, is this, is this more in line with Vaughn and O'Brien? And, um, I know Hug was a different story because we also had a lot of asbestos.
It is comparable to those, those square footages. We have increased the square footage for this elementary school based off of the needs of the community too, right? And the special spaces that they need.
Yeah, okay, that's very helpful. Thank you.
All right, well, we were able to ask quite a few questions along the way, so we'll pause now and go to public comment.
Pablo Navadurin.
Welcome, Mr. Navadurin.
Hello, guys. Hello, guys. So I'm not going to talk about new elementary school behind campus. Uh, talk about the physical, burn Matthew Elementary School and Echo Lord Elementary School. And let's start with burning Matthew Elementary School. So for burning Elementary School, so for Matthew Elementary School, we have like 100 student added capacity. It's like a distraction. So there could be like possibility of a school closer consolidation of Case Smith's or Robert Mitchell Elementary School, or we are Karen Elementary School, but we don't know yet. So I'll talk to, to have capital funding potentially can't tell me now, so. So, and then for, for Corbett Elementary School, uh, for, for Lower Elementary School, when you build a newer Lower Elementary School, we could, we purpose Corbett Elementary School. Make sure you have a community up there at Corbett Elementary School and Case Smith's, or Rachel, or we are Academy School. That could be possibly a school closer or consolidation. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Navadurin.
That's all I have.
All right, well, if anyone has any other comments or questions, otherwise we have a motion before us here.
I move that the Board of Trustees approves the funding in the amount of 152 million 200,000 for the 2425 E major projects program for projects throughout the Washoe County School District as recommended by the Capital Funding Protection Committee.
All right, we have a motion by trustee Westlake and we have a second by trustee Hall. Seeing no lights on for discussion on the motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. All right, motion carries five to zero. Thank you so much, Chief Zimmerman. We really appreciate that. Yeah, we are. All right, team, that closes item 4.01 and brings us now to item 4.02. This is the presentation, discussion and possible action to revise and update the Washoe County School District Strategic Plan 2023 to 2026, including a review of the 15 action steps under the goals and pillars of this strategic plan to determine completion status, available financial resources, benefit to students and alignment to the intent of the goals and pillars. This is an item for possible action. And we have with us today, Dr. Laura Davidson, our Director of Research and Evaluation. Welcome, Dr. Davidson.
Thank you, President Smith, Superintendent Ernst, members of the board. It's my pleasure tonight to present to you a plan for reviewing our current 15 action steps and coming up with, um, some possible revisions to bring back to you in August, uh, for our strategic plan. It's final year of the strategic plan next year. So I want to start with just a little bit of review about where we landed with our strategic plan. So in 2023, this Board of Trustees adopted our current strategic plan, which is set to sunset in June 2026. So this will be our last year of the strategic plan. And it has the four pillars, one beam, and then the five goal areas. And then within each of these goal areas, there's three action steps also adopted by this board. So you've been receiving updates on these 15 action steps all throughout the year through the momentum and milestone presentations. So you probably have a pretty good sense of where some of these are in terms of their completion status. And you may also, through the budget presentations, know of a couple of major district efforts that are not featured anywhere in the strategic plan. That's part of why we wanted to come today to request that we make, um, a consistent process for reviewing these 15 action steps and possibly determine any new revisions, new language replacements that we want to make for our last year of the strategic plan. So we want to make sure that this process is a really consistent one. So our proposal is to have our academic leadership team review each of these 15 action steps against these four criteria areas. So the first is the completion status. So for each of these action steps, what proportion of the milestones towards completion have we made so far? And as you've probably seen throughout the past two years, there are some action steps that are very near full completion and it's really just carrying forward for one more year. There won't be a ton to report on action steps that have hit the majority of their milestones already. Uh, we also want to review the available budget to complete. We know that there are some of these action steps that have really large dedicated staff resources and budget towards them and others that may not have that. And then we also want to look at benefit to students. So over the past two years, our team has been engaging in a lot of comprehensive evaluations of these action steps. And we're getting a very clear picture of which of these action steps are impacting large populations of our students in positive ways. And we want to make sure that when we're reviewing those benefits, that they are hitting a large population of our students. And then the fourth criteria is looking at alignment to goals. So when we're looking at one of our goals like safety and belonging, are these the three action steps that we truly believe are going to move that goal forward? So all those criteria together will give us a very good sense of whether these are the 15 action steps that we want to dedicate our time and strategic reporting attention on for next year. I want to just make a note too, that, uh, what you see is a distilled version of kind of the important completion status updates, budget, um, and evidence that we have collected. But behind the scenes, there is a very lengthy and involved strategic plan reporting process. So every month we convene our executive leadership team and review all the available evidence that we've been collecting for the past two years on these action steps. We also convene our directors monthly to talk about barriers and budget and how to remove those barriers and progress. So when academic leadership team goes to rate each of these action steps, they're depending on all of that information that we've collected over the entire year and really two years when they make these decisions. And it's also not, uh, necessarily means that if one of our action steps receives lower scores on this rubric, that we would stop work on that action step next year. You've seen our budget, we have no surprises there. We don't intend to poll funding or poll any work, um, that we would surprise anyone with. We know that those are set and that work will carry forward next year no matter what. But what we are trying to decide is what we want to report to our public transparently and have you all monitor, um, that are the most important things to look at for next year. So none of that work would change and we would do all of this in alignment and partnership with the directors and with our associations and everyone else and that work would continue no matter what. But what we want to make sure that we clear time for, for next year is, these are 15 action steps that receive a lot of attention in public reporting. And we want our community and you all to know about some of our really high leverage areas that they may not even know about. So for example, like our collaborative, that's, we have a lot of resources dedicated to our 18 highest need schools, but nowhere do you see any of those efforts featured in our strategic plan. So that's something that we would like our community to know more about and for you all to monitor more extensively. So when we are thinking about, if we see any action steps that we do want to sunset for next year, we want to think about how we would replace them. So same as, uh, some of the criteria for revisions or retiring action steps, we want to look at how central is the new action step to the mission of that goal? Do we have funding and resources allocated to that new action step? And are we seeing preliminary evidence that we think this new action step will be beneficial to students? So very similar to our revision process. So some of our next steps as we engage in this process, we, in the, probably in the next week or two, if this process is approved, we would have our academic leadership team engage in that rubric process with the hopes of about mid-July, having some scores together so that we can inform our conversation about what we might revise, what we might sunset and have a discussion about what we might replace it with. And then we, once we have that refined language, we would take that to associations, to our departments. So there are no surprises in our community about new action steps coming or any sunsetting of action steps. Again, I don't think there will be more than a handful or any surprises there. And then we would come back to you on August 26th to give you the new revised strategic plan action steps and anything that we add to the strategic plan. We'd also accompany with some metrics so you know exactly how we're going to report on it for next year. So I know that was quick and I'm happy to take any questions that you might have about this revision process.
Thank you, Dr. Davidson, and you're absolutely right. We, we receive regular and thorough updates and I personally appreciate it. What I'm struggling with is this is very succinct and, and I appreciate that. And for me personally, I'm not seeing the plan that, that's going to be worked on as we move forward. Specifically going to the strategic plan action steps and those 15 steps. What would have been really nice as a reminder, because th- this is big and we know that. Um, and you have so much, you and your team have so much information. Is that, for example, P3 strategies. It would be really nice to have two or three bullets on strategies that are currently implemented and even a plus or a minus that it's, it's working. And when we look at fifth grade transitions under student voice and advocacy, how many? What does that look like? So again, I'm struggling with making sense of how the strategic plan action steps are going to be integrated into a plan for revising our district strategic plan. I, I, I'm not getting the alignment and it could just be me, so help me.
Sure, thank you for the question. Um, so the 15 action steps were the ones that were adopted in 2023 by this group and along with a lot of stakeholder groups, right? And every month when we do those milestone and momentum presentations, we do show kind of, uh, we asked each action step owner, the directors who sit up here, to outline what are the key milestones and action steps towards that effort? So for example, um, I Ready might have three action steps under I Ready that are critical to making sure that I Ready gets implemented with fidelity. So those are some of the things that we've shown you at the milestone momentum presentation. So it would be completion of training of all staff. It would be completion of, um, an analysis to determine whether I Ready has an impact on smarter balance scores. So those are some of the updates we've tried to provide. And I know we are distilling a lot of information we collect all throughout the year. And I know executive leadership team is probably tired of hearing about all of the information that we've shared around the strategic plan, action steps in, in kind of nauseating detail sometimes, I'm sure. But, um, we do try to create this, uh, system where we're providing you the highlights of all of that work and letting you know how we've defined milestones for each of these action steps. At this point, we have had these action steps for about two years now. Probably as you've seen those presentations, you get a sense of, wow, this one's really far along and in great shape. And if we keep doing it, then we're going to have great outcomes for next year. Hopefully from some of the presentations that we've shared. Others, we have pilot projects that we've been doing for two years and we've been collecting evidence about them. And we're not sure if we may want to scale it up for next year or if we're ready to sunset that pilot in order to replace it with an action step that we have also been collecting information about that you would never know about because it's not featured in the strategic plan. So I think that's the process that we're trying to do over the next six weeks is to really go through all of that information as a team to understand what are some of the recommendations that we can bring. that we can bring forth to you for August about where we'd like to sunset some things. Did that help answer? Are you asking for maybe like more of a checklist, like a summary of the five presentations to tell you like this one is working, this one's not, or?
Eventually, yeah, once you go through that process, once you go through your revision criteria, you know, your four criteria, which I think are spot on, that will be very helpful. I guess for me, for me, the opportunity to understand how you're going to utilize these revision criteria is going to be extremely important so that. And so it might be that it's small group meetings through the process. I I guess having been part of the team that helped I moved the strategic plan along, and and we are almost finished with the plan, and it's time to evaluate it. You actually, we've been evaluating it all along. It's it's been an ongoing process. I guess when we get to this completion point, I personally am going to want more information about the process and how we're going to be informing our decisions so that we can, because there's going to be an approval down the road, and and how we can rely on the process for informing our decision making. We've got tons of data, tons of data. Okay, I'll stop. Thank you.
Dr. Nicolet, thank you very much for the comments. Again, today is about just approving the plan for revising the district strategic plan. Next year is the third year. This is an effort to take something that our community, Board of Trustees, and many have provided feedback on to develop that strategic plan. We're also looking to have some foresight in from what's in front of us. We have budgetary decisions. We have alignment of resources regarding these action steps. And this is a really a proactive effort. All previous actions that I've been a part of do a complete reconstruction once a strategic plan is finished. We believe this is an efficient way, and work has been done throughout the year. We have shared milestones and momentum. And I would suggest it's it's really good and comprehensive data that does provide us a lot of information relative to our P5 strategies that have been implemented, the work that has been done. And so, you know, we can, I think it would be good if folks want to look back through milestones and momentum, but that information is definitely there, and it is a deep dive. Really, this is about, we have accomplished parts of our strategic plan. We can continue to to work on those same pieces. But as Dr. Davidson has said, there is outstanding work that's being done across many areas that we believe can have a wider impact for our students than some of the identified action steps, of which we have really just about all the way accomplished. So again, we can keep those, but I think it kind of keeps us at a standstill. I will say, Dr. Davidson's had the opportunity to provide myself, Deputy McMaster, a good in-depth look at the process that's going to be used and how we're going to do that. And so really, today is about, do we have permission from the board to go forward and look at revising action steps that really in large part have been accomplished in our strategic plan? At the next meeting, when we come back in August, we would talk about what we have identified as the action steps, describe the process that's been used. If there is additional appetite for high-level summary information as far as some of those actions, we can bring that back, no problem on that. But then, when we come back in August, it will be, will the board approve us moving forward with the identified action steps? Was the process, and I know that's what you're really getting at here now, is the process, I can say that I have had a look at the process. I think the process is comprehensive, robust, inclusive, and exactly what it needs to be for us to move efficiently. And that's a part of what we're getting at here is is timing and efficiency is important. That's why we're bringing this forward on the last board meeting of the 25 school year so that we can immediately dive in on the 26th school year, engage this work, and start using these actions to to propel us forward. So at that next meeting, we would be coming forward. Here's the action steps. And do you, as a board, approve us extending our strategic plan for additional year with these newly designed action steps? So just wanted to try to give us all a little bit more context as we're kind of working through this recommendation.
Thank you for that. And I I will, I will expose my my thinking at this point. I appreciate that. Spot on. Totally got it. I think my challenge has been in calling it for a motion approving a plan. Because I I don't, my thinking, right? Let's clarify. This is not a plan. These these are more action steps that you're going to go through with certain criteria, with certain focus. I get that. So so it was my struggle, and I apologize for that. It's still not a plan in my mind, but I get, I absolutely get it. And and thank you for the eloquent summary.
So so in summary, we're just, and I I struggle too with the items. So just to clarify, so really, all we're really doing is is giving permission to staff to to begin to revise this for an additional year. So what we have now will continue through school year 26.
Almost. I think we're just about there. So as we continue to kind of summarize this, and then maybe we'll come back to the recommendation based on some of the wording and and what have you. Today is simply about us having the opportunity to look at the action steps. And then, that's all all it is, review the action steps and then be able to make consideration for new action steps. Because in that review, we would have found that we've probably accomplished a lot of them. So again, I get the plan part. I get the summary part. So it's really just about us being able to, do we have approval to look at the action steps? See what we've accomplished? Then, that's all today is. Then we come back in August with what those action steps are and then say, based on these action steps, does the board approve us moving forward with a one-year extension of the strategic plan with the new action steps in there? Okay.
And I was able to get some advice from our chief legal counsel. But before I do that, I'll just back up. So the strategic plan is something that the board adopted with the community input. And so we also, as a board, although sometimes, you know, this doesn't come up very often, but technically, we decide as a governing body, a majority vote on what the superintendent and the staff spend their time on. And this is an opportunity for us, completely appropriate in our role in balanced governance, to provide that direction. And what our chief legal counsel pointed out was that the motions are are drafts that are recommendations. It is very, very amenable to just change the word approves the plan to approves the steps. Technically, anyone who makes the motion can make them, but we do that all the time. But it could be as simple as just approves the steps for revising as opposed to the plan, and that's absolutely no problem whatsoever. Trustee Westlake?
Thank you, President Smith. I just wanted to clarify, we're not reinventing the wheel. We are building on our original intent. And it's, this is kind of a work in progress as we're gathering more information and seeing how things are, the outcomes, if they're positive, tweaking things. Is that correct, Dr. Davidson?
Correct. Yeah, I don't see a wholesale revision of all 15 action steps. I think it'll be a handful that we've done the pilot. We're ready to determine whether or not we want to scale up or not. But I don't see this being a wholesale revision. But we still want to ask permission to engage in the process to review it. So it's not a surprise.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion if we're ready.
You can't because we have not done public comment.
Oh, thanks for the reminder.
But I will, I will put you, I will have you right there.
I'm ready.
Oh, okay. I just, I just have one, one thing I just want to say. And I've, I've talked with the superintendent about this multiple times. I, I, as a long-term employee of this school district, I have seen a lot of superintendents. And now as a board member, I have had the opportunity to, in this last six months, really see an incredible amount of work that this leadership team has done to review the last 10 to 15 years of a lot of turnover of leadership in in our district and really fine tune. And that's what I see this as. This is taking what we're already doing really well and fine tuning it. Many of you have heard me say the binder syndrome. Every district I've ever been a part of, every superintendent brings their own things. And I really, really commend this leadership team for not bringing in all the new things, instead saying, hey, we're already doing some really great stuff. Can we fine tune it? Can we do better with what we have? And if it's not working, how can we, how can we make it better for us? And so I I just want to commend the superintendent and his team for for taking this step and saying, we may not have been, all of us, a part of creating this this strategic plan, but there are a lot of parts that are working, and maybe there's a few we can fine tune. So I I love that we're doing this because what happened three years ago is totally different than where we're at today. So I I really appreciate you guys bringing this to us. Thank you.
Thank you. J.J., do we have any public comment on this item?
I have no cards for this item.
All right, so I'll bring it back here. I'll just mention, so I just want to completely plus one what you said. So, you know, almost anyone who's ever worked a job in their life knows that it is a very common thing when new leaders want to come in and they want their fingerprints on things. But we have a current opportunity here with our superintendent, who says, you know what? They're good bones here. And there's a tremendous amount of hard cost, human resource cost, to completely redo a strategic plan. And maybe that's not necessary because we have a fantastic one right now. And so this is an opportunity to evolve and extend pending future action by this board. And so I really appreciate the cost effectiveness of this, recognizing the quality work that went into it. And I'm excited to see what you come back with in August. And on that note, take it away, Dr. Dye.
I move that the Board of Trustees approve the process for the review and revision of the Washoe County School District Strategic Plan Action Steps for the 2025-2026 school year.
I second.
All right, so we have a motion by trustee Nicolet. We have a second by trustee Westlake. Seeing Noel Lights on, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. All right, motion carries five to zero. Thank you so much. All right, team, that closes item 4.02 and section four in its entirety and moves us on now to section five, our reports, starting with our board reports. So we will go ahead, and we will start with trustee Westlake, and we will make our way around.
Thank you. So not a lot of different things, but the graduations took up a lot of time, but they were amazing. I can say I went to every single one this year, and they were all different. But the one thing that was the same in all of them was the heartfelt, truthful, a lot of it based on relative things that had gone on in the speakers, their lives, their hardships, their accomplishments, their their visions of their hopes of what they want to see. It was amazing. I think I cried several times. There were babies. We need more babies at the next ones. I mean, please bring all the babies. They're awesome. We were fighting over the babies. And then the only other thing, other than those wonderful graduations, as being the representative for the school district for NASB, Nevada Association of School Boards, we had a Zoom meeting, and we went over a lot of the legislative, the what was passed, what wasn't passed, and things moving forward. And let's see, I just want to make sure. At some point, I would like to talk about AI. A speaker, Mark McGuinness, that was at one of our opportunities to learn, was on an AI presentation and just amazing things. Some scary, some scary things. So at some point, I think we need to delve into that a little bit. But that's it. Thank you.
All right. Well, I, yes, the graduations were incredible and just so moving to see how hard our students have worked to get to that point. And I loved getting to look at all the caps and see see the creativeness of our students and the amount of their cords and all of their stools. It just shows how incredibly hard our students were working. I I also just have to say, I really, really enjoyed sharing the the experience of being a senior parent with several people. There was a lot of us in the leadership team that had graduates, and that was really cool to get to experience that together. And so I think the the highlights of my last two weeks was giving my own daughter her diploma. And yesterday, we got to do our tours of Vaughn and Debbie Smith. And I I jokingly told Dr. Dye that I might just have to go back to the classroom because they are, wow. I would love to, so any of the teachers at those schools, I'm just throwing it out there. I'm happy to come be a guest teacher anytime. I'd love, oh my gosh, so cool to teach in those schools. And that's all I have.
Oh, that was lovely. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I want to thank all the folks that helped for graduation. And this is a short list. I know I'm leaving people out. But there's Julie, there's Vanji, there's Kara, there's the Washoe County School District Police Department and Washoe County School District administrators and the law or staff and the families and the friends. And this is Diane Nicolet Numbers. Okay, this is, I counted, I went in and I rounded up. I counted in the programs, 19 of them. Well, one didn't have a program, so I had to just remember. 4,500 graduates. That's how many hands we shook. That's how many hugs we got to get and and give and families that we got to cheer on and staff. And it was spot on beautiful. I am a trustee for Washoe County CASA Foundation, court-appointed special advocates. And and I just want to share that we currently now, oh, gosh, are serving 78 children. There's 615 more in Washoe County that are in the court system, and we have 84 advocates and doing wonderful work. And many of those children are in our schools. And so it's a big benefit. I visited the open house at the Carville Park Senior Living Complex. I think they invited me because my hair is silver. And it's remodeled and renovated units, and they are absolutely gorgeous. It's senior preference, affordable living. And it's a wonderful example of industry experts partnering for a common cause. There were the trades, banking, developers, designer, housing. And to reiterate, the Vaughn and Debbie Smith Career and Technical Academy tours were wonderful. I don't know if I'm ready to go back to school, but I wouldn't mind hanging out more and watching the students love it. I attended the annual Bill Pierce courtesy 2025 Honda Civic giveaway. And I will let President Smith expound on that because I know she has beautiful words to say. But it was for perfect attendance. There were 51 students from Washoe County School District with perfect attendance. Ask yourself, did you do that? The kiddo, the kiddo that won has transportation for his new job. Is that not cool? Mom was filled with joy, tears, awe. And I think there might have been a moment when she realized that you have to pay taxes. And Sandy Rafielli, the owner, the most petite, beautiful model of joy, grit, and heart that you'd ever want to meet. And back to NASB, we had a wonderful conversation about what's next. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, at the last board meeting, I had to dart out early. There was an issue I had to deal with in my, my other life. So I had a litany of things I wanted to say in a tribute to the class of 2025. So that's really what's on my, my, my heart today. Again, I want to congratulate all the students, in particular, two students that, that live in my household. And I want to give a shout out to trustee Holes, senior, and superintendent Ernst, senior, Ainsley, and Laurel, respect, Lauren, respectfully. And just such a wonderful moment. And really want to express just how proud I am to be serving this capacity and honor our students as they go off and, and make a mark in this world. And I wish them all the best, and God bless them, and be kind to, to one another. That's, that's what was on my mind, and I wanted to make sure that I said that. And also, again, as trustee Nicolette pointed out, I do want to specifically give a shout out to Julie Kemp, Kara McKenzie, Joanne Kipera, Amber Seabird, in particular, of course, our Police Department, all those that made those numerous graduations a success. I don't think people really recognize the magnitude of these. These are special events that require a lot of moving pieces, a lot of logistics, a lot of communications. And those particular individuals that I, that I recognize, along with Banji Russell, who I think is passing the baton to us going forward. Thank you for making it so special. Thank you for making this trustee feel really special. And I'm forever grateful for that. And I'm forever grateful to say that I'm a parent of two graduates of the Washoe County School District. So thank you.
I had to get myself ready. So definitely want to plus one to what everyone has said about graduations. JJ, if you could pull up my photos here. So we've got a couple pictures here of our student trustees graduating, and then also a little team shot on the next photo. All of the ceremonies were truly wonderful. And some of them really spoke to my heart. They were all very important and meaningful. But I do want to say that hearing the valedictorian of innovations, unique player, her speech was very touching. The Rise Academy of Adult Achievement graduates, I can't get through any of those graduations without crying. And then also the Wooster High School. So there was a trio of students that shared a speech entitled, "We Belong: Dreams Without Borders." It was Bretza Molina Cisneros, Celeste Sez Varga, and Genesis Valencia Rivera. And so I want to read an excerpt of one of those. "When I first arrived, I never imagined I'd be standing here today. Everything was new, the language, the people, the customs. I was afraid, filled with doubts, unsure if I would be able to adapt or live up to expectations. But what I found here is something I will never forget. People who reached out to help, who looked at me with empathy, and who made me feel like I belonged. And if, you know what? That's why we're here. And it was just, it really spoke to me." So congratulations to all of them. I presented at the Reno Sparks Leadership Class of 2025 at the Chamber of Commerce on behalf of the district. That was an amazing experience. I attended the Triumph at Luncheon for the Girl Scouts of the Sierra. Not at all surprised to see that Assembly Member Natha Anderson, she's one of our educators, was also listed in one of the Gold Awards for Governance with the girls. Attending the Bill Pierce Courtesy Honda Must Be Present to Win event was truly amazing, as Sandy Rafeli is truly a pillar in this community, and she offers so much. Congratulations to Jackson from Galena High. You can win a car just by coming to school. And that says a lot. The tour of Vaughn Middle School in the Debbie Smith CTE Academy with Dr. Die and trustee Hall was truly amazing. These are spaces we've seen in photos, and soon the community will see them in real life. It is like touching a dream to see these schools. And I will now close with, someone's turning one in anniversary years. And so this is our last meeting of the year. And so it is also Superintendent Ernst's first anniversary, as our superintendent. So I have little happy anniversary cakes. The claps are for you. I mean, I did bring really delicious cakes, but the claps are for you. And so we'll all have some little treats, and I have some little happy anniversary bontinis. Thank you for this year. We really appreciate you. All right. So that closes item 5.01. And now we move on to item 5.02, our superintendent's report.
Well, thank you, President Smith. Thank you to all the trustees. That's a really thoughtful gesture, and look forward to indulging with, with everybody. So thank you. You know, I appreciate all the comments about the graduations. Graduations are really a significant, special, culminating experience for our students. It's really why we do all that we do. There's, there's so much to the why of, of where we come from in education. And the graduations are a really fulfilling experience. You listen, there was speeches mentioned, I think about the incline speech that was mentioned about somebody who took a risk four years ago, and, and, and just the innovations. And there were just so many moving aspects. And, and then what was great is to hear the appreciation for their schools, for the support, for the teachers, and everybody who supported them on their journey. There was such genuine appreciation. And so really, they're just a, a very moving experience. I think it's a wonderful something that we have our employees participate in the opportunity to hand out diplomas, and just a really special something. I was really pleased with the graduations, how well they ran. I too thank all of those that you've mentioned. They really did a great job putting our graduations together. And so it was a really nice culminating experience to the year. I do reflect on our year together, and, and thank everyone, the board, for your leadership, your support. I thank our leadership team. I am blessed to work with people that have the, the ethics, the dedication, the kids-first commitment. That is really what WCSD is about. So I'm really fortunate to, to work with an amazing leadership team. And we have amazing teachers and, and support staff. And so, you know, when I just reflect on the year, we came in with some, some, some real goals. We've talked about them in the strat plan. You look at the milestones and momentum, I think there's a lot to be proud of. And I think we want to continue to celebrate the work that's being done in our district. We have really made some tremendous strides forward, but we've done it together. It's all about doing it together. And I think that that's, that's what we want to embrace as we're going forward. And I look forward to the year ahead and the work that will continue. And we're going to keep doing great things for, for our students. That's what's at the center of everything that we're doing, our families and our staff. And again, it's been a really positive year. And so thanks to everybody. Very much appreciate it. And that's that for the 25 school year. All right.
That's fantastic. Thank you, Superintendent Ernst. That closes item 5.02, and brings us now to Section 6, our closing items, beginning with item 6.01. This is our closing public comment. Who do we have, JJ?
Pablo Navadurin.
Welcome, Mr. Navadurin.
All right, here we go. Here we go. Happy, happy first year anniversary, Dr. Joe Ernst. Yay. I don't know how long you're gonna be, how many years you're gonna be retired, so.
How long?
All right. So, so I did, I did apply for Sony Vice Community, and, and we know C, C of Reno, Neighborhood Vice Board on Ward 3, because I want to help on, on such a Reno community, because they like to not, not, not enough development here in such a Reno, because that's why you see the declining of school, Echo Lawyer, Veteran, Booth, and Corbett, Lord Von Wooster. You look at all the declining women, for students, not just for students, but for population as well. So we need new envelop, need new enveloping here, and we need dedication here. So that's why I'm joined for Neighborhood Vice Board on Ward 3. So, so a happy 2025. So this is my last speaker for 2024-25 school year.
Thank you so much, Mr. Navadurin.
That's all I have.
All right. All right. Well, that closes item 6.01, and brings us now to item 6.02, our next meeting announcement, which is going to be Tuesday, July 29, 2025. I do want to make the point that that's actually the fifth Tuesday of the month. Normally, we follow a certain cadence with Julies, but in this event, because July does have five Tuesdays, we will be doing this on the fifth Tuesday. So for those who have their auto reminders, I just want to point that out. That now closes item 6.02, and brings us to 6.03, adjournment at 3:43 PM. Thank you.